Yeah, there's a lot going on. I don't know. I don't know. Huh? Well, I know they do. They've got to make sure our amount is maybe like fifty, fifty million this year.
I know a few months ago that on the agenda was trash. And at that time, I know I went all the way through the meeting because I did watch it. And at that time, Dave Morris said he had to figure it out. At the end of the meeting, because you didn't even discuss it at that meeting. Because Carl Lexki, about the trash, and he said, "I've got to figure it out." That's what you said at that meeting?
I had a proposal to figure it out, yes.
Okay. Okay, you know, is that what this is? You know, is it five dollars? My gosh, that's a 50% increase.
Yeah.
You know, and there's a lot of people out there that can't afford it.
Yeah, well...
And they're talking about the water rates going up again, possibly? You know, I mean, you guys have to look at this, and I'm voting, I'm not speaking, you know, and you guys already made your mind up, because that's why a lot of people's not here. Do you think you guys already made your mind up? You know, so why come and express your feelings?
Yeah.
About it, you know? I can't lie about it if I don't show up and say something.
No, we appreciate you telling us.
I mean, I really go get good revisitives and look at it. I think we've got less service on this contract of the trash company. And I'm not, I'm not thrilled with the way they do their job. I mean, I can go alone where they don't have alley pickup, and the trash totes and stuff are up on the curb. When they pick them up, they're not back up on the curb. They don't get them back in the grass, they get them down the street. You know, so why are we bidding up with this and paying them this kind of money and doing this?
Did you say your name was Tom?
Tom Gilson, yeah.
Tom, did you, the chair address, which is in my ward, did you have issues in the wintertime with not getting your trash picked?
No, because mine is, is actually in my driveway, which is right on Milburn Street. So I didn't have any problem with it. But my neighbors did, yes.
Okay.
And, and even to this day, recycling usually is not there the same day as trash. It's usually, well, last week it was, because they came last week, and I'm getting the trash picked up on Tuesday, they came on Thursday. You know, and I'm thinking, so here, you know, people that don't have the alley have it sitting out there for a few extra days, and then they leave it out the street. They don't even put it back up in the grass. So, you know, I don't think we're getting what we're paying for now. And, and I definitely don't think that it warrants an increase in RFPs to pay. I mean, I, I know that you guys are under budget and everything, but I call it, I call it a tax, is what it all boils down to, because for years and years and years, they're paying our property taxes. So I don't think we should have tax increase on it. That's all I can say.
Well, proof is in the book.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
My name is Patrick Kleckner. I'm number 2272, South County, West Main 5 West. That's in accounting, so this, this trash hike is, doesn't affect me. But I'm here representing my mom and other seniors in her same situation. She lives off of social security, it's a fixed income, as we all know. What little bumps that she may get from year to year doesn't even keep up with inflation, let alone the rising, the rising cost of, you know, her supplemental healthcare. So five dollars is a lot to her. It's, it may be not for me or you necessarily, but it is for her. And I, I'm just asking you to revisit that and oppose that, that trash, that extra five dollars, because it is a 50% hike. She puts out maybe, we put the tote out like once every two or three weeks, and I know that, because it's either me or my sister that does it. So she's only putting a tote out once every couple, three weeks, and she's getting her trash fees raised. And I just don't, I think that needs to be looked at more seriously before you vote on that. And of course, I have to be opposed to it, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to come to the mic?
I got volunteered by my neighbors, Steffi Haristy, 831 State Street, and my fellow neighbors have told me to come here. So...
Keep your name again.
Steffi Haristy.
Just Haristy.
So, we are confused and frustrated because of the trash switch that happened with the recycling and the new totes. Um, I actually got skipped and had to hunt one down, that was awesome. And where's the benefit? Like, if it, if the service was excellent, then this would make sense, sort of. We wouldn't be opposed to it, probably. But the service is terrible. There is a house that is on the street in front of me that has boxes still sitting out, because nobody could figure out where the recycling was supposed to go, and now there's just a pile of boxes still sitting there, because they didn't come back through and just, as a courtesy, pick those up, because they couldn't figure out whether they're going to do alleys or streets. And why are we rewarding bad behavior? If they can't give us good service with the pay that we're giving them, why are we giving them more money? So, I mean, I guess for me and my neighbors, it's not, we don't want to pay an extra five dollars, like that does impact our budget, whether it's a lot of money or not, but the service is terrible. Why are we paying them if they're not going to provide us with a decent service?
Right.
So...
Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to come forward?
Geez, no one else.
My thought that should go out of this court. The one point I want to make, everybody here is talking about the trash tax or fee. In reality, you can call it whatever you want. I know everybody's talking about, I remember when they originally did this in 2010, I was sitting here saying, you know, there's things we can do to make it more efficient. But it didn't really matter, because you have a certain cost of the contract to pick them up. Well, but you know, I realize that you could call this the park's fee, you could call it the, you know, a fire station fee, whatever you want to call it, it's still the same thing. It's a supplement to our property taxes. It's an addition to our property taxes. And as I mentioned in the paper, you know, earlier, that, you know, back in 2010, when Mayor Fincher created this, he stated in the paper at that time that it was a supplement to the, to the property taxes, because the caps had happened at that point. So I just want to make it clear that this is, is a tax, and is simply a get-around the property taxes. And so we have a cap that, on a property, at 1%, and so the legislature did that to keep our property taxes from getting too high, too, too high a taxes. But now the cities, and we're not the only city that's created this trash fee, it's a way of getting around it. And there is no limit to what you guys could charge us for the trash fee. Uh, you can make it $100. You can make it whatever you want. There is no limit. And so I think that's a problem, that we call this a trash fee, when it actually is a supplement to our property taxes. And if you got, like a guy who just mentioned, if you got somebody that's, the average median, uh, property tax in the city is $620. Well, if you raise it to 15, it's 29% of, of raising your property taxes. Who would stand for that if, if, if we actually said we're raising our property taxes by 29%? I would think you'd get more people than that's in here that would be complaining about that. But you throw it in on a utility bill, seems less painful, but it's the same thing. And so you take, that's at $620, 29%. What about the people that are like this guy was talking about, on fixed income, and maybe only pay $200 on property taxes? And now you're a 100% increase in their taxes. And I, you know, it's a lot. So I just want to make a point that this could be called anything, and it's simply a raise in our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make a comment?
My name is Cheryl Brand. I live at 2300 Jefferson Street, and I have to agree with the person who said that we get terrible service. We also have some confusion about where we were supposed to put our stuff. Um, because I live on a corner of Jefferson and 23rd, we kind of did a lot of confusion in that area in the first place. But, um, we have damage to our actual street from the trucks, um, when they skid to a halt, wherever the pickup spot is. So now you're telling me that I have to not only reward their bad behavior, um, for their ser, their poor service, but now I'm gonna, I'm also gonna end up paying for the street that they've damaged. And I have to go around every Friday afternoon after they've picked up, because there's no lid on these trucks, and pick up all the trash and recycles that have blown all over the neighborhood. And we've had lots of windy days, uh, usually on Friday, I don't know why that happens. But anyway, um, so we're not getting the service, we're having to pay for it twice in the sense of, on the utility bill and in the repair of the streets. So I would hope that you would look at some other way to fund this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make a comment? 6:42 PM, we will now close the public hearing.
Chris, can I, can I say a few things? I'll start by just saying that last fall, our contract with Republic was running out. So we put offers out, we, we advertised. When we advertised, we thought we would have three different bidders for the trash, because it turned out it was just our current provider, Republic, and Waste Management that bid on, on the contract. Um, and unfortunately, one of the things that I don't think anyone expected was the fact that, uh, that the better of the two bids increased our trash costs per year by about $250,000 overnight. So at that point, we had to start looking at how, how do we do this? How do we fix this problem? And unfortunately, we all know that sometimes in life, you have to do things that we don't want to do. Now, I'm not telling you, there's six of us sitting up here that'll decide how we want to handle trash. I just, the guy that said, "I'll try to figure out the best solution for us."
How long was the contract that you signed?
Five-year contract.
Why did we sign a five-year contract if, you know, $1,000, not a cow, in my opinion? Why did we sign a five-year contract?
Well, I can't tell you the answer to that, but we just know that, as you've seen, just by changing the way that we do the totes and those things, I, I wouldn't want to be bidding trash yearly or by every couple of years. Now, whether or not that was a good decision, sir, I'm not going to try to defend it one way or the other. It's what we advertised, it's what we had for the past two, two cycles. So we just more or less thought we'd continue the cycle of every five years. So that's what we did. Um, and, and just to give you a little history, um, you know, Bob, Bob came forward and he told you how the trash fee came about. And, uh, a lot of things have changed since, uh, we went to the property tax caps. And like Bob said, Mayor Fincher said it the way it was back when he, when they initially started the trash fee. We had to find a way, our, our revenue dropped overnight from one year to the next. They phased it in, but it still was a traumatic, uh, experience. And, and I would say this in defense of Mayor Fincher and all who were on the council, I don't know who they were back then, but I thought they did a phenomenal job of bringing in the city's cost to adapt to the traumatic revenue loss that we had. And, you know, I guess the thing that I would say is, when we look back now, you know, that was 2010, and I can't tell you how much my property taxes dropped back then, but they dropped down quite a bit.
Other than counting that time, so...
But, but, you know, so, so what's happened is, the trash isn't unique. A lot of other taxes have been created to offset property taxes and the loss of, of revenue to the cities. But I looked up the original ordinance for trash, and back in 2010, when they started the trash fee, the original cost was $11.97 in 2010. The next year it went up to $12.30. Each year of that contract, the trash fee went up 2.7%. Now, I can't tell you, Bob could probably tell you what year they eliminated the trash fee. But if it would have played out, and we would have followed just the percentage hikes in the trash cost for the city to pay it, the fee right now would be, currently would be $16.74. Well, when I came on council, like Bob said, the trash fee had, had been done away with. But the problem that we ran into is that I went back and looked through some old budgets, and in 2016, our general fund budget went into the negatives trying to pay the trash cost. And eventually, they switched some of the costs from that to another fund. And when we came on the council in 2016, and I got council members up there that will tell you, I fought like the dickens to not implement a trash fee. But, but after 2018, we knew we could not. We couldn't fund our other departments, is what it was amounted to. We couldn't give proper raises to our employees to serve. We couldn't buy the equipment that they needed to run the street department, run the fire department, run the sheriff's, the police department. All of our departments were suffering because we were paying this additional near a million dollars at that point. So we had to decide to do something. So when we implemented the trash fee again in 2019, we, we made $10, and, and we were still offsetting some of the costs. This year alone, we're going to offset the cost of trash, almost a half a million dollars, because the fee is going up, and we're still collecting the $10 a month from customers. Now, is it a good deal or not? That's for each of us to decide. Um, I would say this, my mother's 92 years old, and she's just like Pat's mother. But you know what my mom says to me? Of course, she's biased, because I'm on the council, she's always going to support me, or at least I think she is, at, at least when I'm there, she does. But she says, her, her property tax bill came the other day, she's low income. She says, "Hey, Dave, you want to go down and pay my property taxes for me?" I said, "Sure, you can write a check." She says, "No, they're $5." Her property taxes for the year, $5. She says, "I don't mind helping out by paying the trash fee." But maybe not everyone, and, and trust me, Pat, she lives on the tiny income that you're talking about. No one wants to raise it up. But we've tried to do it in a fashion that we're still helping everyone in the community. By doing it at $15, we're still going to be supporting the trash fee for about $200,000 to $250,000 for the life of the contract. And if we, if we change it now, it's, in a perfect world, it's sustainable. It's going to be $15 in 2025.
The only thing about it is, for all kinds of other stuff that you guys come up with that you want to do, there's always funding to be found someplace, whether it's on trash or can't be the funding found.
Well, it's like I told you, we did it for years, and what happened was, we had no funding for the things that the city needs today, but, you know, everything else is still going on, and low prices increases also. So... We've tried to, what we've tried to do is kind of balance in it all. I don't really have anything else I can tell you. I can tell you a couple of facts, just, just simple facts about trash.
You can, you can go either way with me, Dave, because you're not going to dismiss me. You know, I think $10 a month is plenty, and that's my opinion.
Okay. I just, I just want to explain to you what I've come up with.
I'm willing to study.
And, and all these guys may have a different opinion, so they're, they're free to share whatever.
I'm going into a client, I've been studying them, and I realize that, you know, yes, it costs money, I realize that. But for years, and years, and years, and years, it's taken out of property taxes, you know, so...
But again, it goes back to, when the property taxes went with the caps, a lot of the revenue that we used for the trash disappeared, and for a lot of other things, as far as that goes.
Why did it disappear?
Because...
I would have been there, but why did it disappear?
The amount that we got to split amongst the cost of the city, there wasn't enough money to go around. And eventually, they decided that trash was a good option. And, and why we call it a fee rather than a tax, and I mean, it's just playing games with a name, but if you own a home, but you rent it out, you don't pay for the trash, your renter pays for the trash, unless you tie it in with their rent or whatever. So, so it's, it's a way to maybe collect a few dollars from people that don't typically pay property tax. But in 2015, we paid $883,000 for trash. This year, we're going to pay $1,208 for trash, $1,208,000. And, uh, like I said, each year of the contract, it goes up 3.5%. So...
Dave, can I say something?
Can you say anything, Dave?
Again, we're back on the column, this is the trash fee. This is a simple budget issue. You can take that money out of anything, I mean, you can spend that money for anything. I don't know why we're arguing about the trash part of it, because it's surely just part of the budget. So, I mean, you can make that up like that's something else, but I just don't, I just want to bring up again, this isn't just trash. I mean, you're using trash. This is simply raising taxes to pay for whatever the entire budget covers. Well, we're not out here...
And, and like I said, we made, you know, choices were made, and this was a decision we had to make, again, back in 2019, to implement the fee again. And I've shared really about everything I can with you. So if there's anyone else who would like to speak, I just wanted to kind of lay it out there for you guys.
Okay, so if we're going to raise the fee so it covers the budget all the same day, the trash company that we have the contract with, why are they not being held accountable for their poor service? I wouldn't be here, my neighbors wouldn't be here if our service was what it should be. If we were in a restaurant, we wouldn't tip a waitress for the service that we got. But yeah, we're going to give it extra. I get it, it's your budget, and like, the city has to pay it, but for us, it's like tipping a waitress for bad service.
That's, that's where I have a problem with myself. Look to the mayor's office, to the board of public works. They're the ones that can directly talk with, uh, Republic and ask them, "Hey, you know, we're..." It's, it, from what I'm hearing, it's not so much as we have people complaining that the fee's going up, it's, you don't want lousy service, but pay more. That's, that's what I'm hearing from, and that's what, yeah, and that's what I'm hearing from most people. So I, I, as a councilman, would ask the mayor's office to have a conversation with these people and see if their service can't get better.
Good news.
Is this the first time that people complain about the service?
No, I do have good news, though. I can tell you right now, we've got the administrative assistant in the, in the audience and the deputy mayor, and they can tell you both. We've been on Republic's for a while, since January.
But is there anything in the contract that we can penalize?
Well, I know the line. I mean, we, how long has it been for them to get it switched over to start with?
Then we signed the four contracts, if we have no, no recourse...
Why were they struggling to pick up recycling for so long? I get what you have changes, there's pickups, but this is ridiculous. And it's still a pickup. Like I said, they're still still sitting on curbs, because nobody's been told they have to move it, for whatever reason, or been cited for not moving their trash. So what's the difference between trash, not being able to get it out of the alley, if it's also sitting in some of these front yards? Because I had to look at it for a month.
I did just recently, I don't know if they're still living or not, but I've seen them on Broadway and Martha Street, picking it up, out front, the recycles. And I'm thinking, I don't know if they'll move it to the back, but I've seen them picking it up, so I don't, I don't know.
Who in the city is it? The deputy mayor that is the project manager? Or is it the mayor that's over, the liaison between these? I'm just asking, I don't know.
It depends, uh, you know, the on the ground set up, the general code enforcement, the higher...
Why isn't the code enforcement officer doing his job?
Well, we have been, I mean, there, there have been...
Well, according to the people talking down here, it's been going on for several months, and it's terrible.
It's not a small problem, you're not going to fix it overnight.
No, but you have to have somebody in charge that's going to be the mediator between it, so...
But, you know, I, I realize that you're going to pay Republic whether you're voting this increase or not, because you got a contract with them. So this increase really has nothing to do with their service. They're going to get their money one way or the other.
I agree, and, and...
So this, the increase is not really depending on their service at all, because they got a contract, so...
No, I understand that, and like you said, they're going to get their money one way or the other. But my position as a council, five ward, uh, member, I, I have to vote for this, because if not, it's going to come out of our general fund, which next...
I don't think you're voting for your constituents.
Well, I haven't had any of them call me. None, zero.
You know why? Just like I told you when I was talking on the mic.
Yeah.
Because they all think that you got to come up with it, so it's a damn deal, so why?
I mean, that, that, I mean, I hate to see mine go up. Just like you said, water rates and everything else in the poor service, uh, just like other contracts we have, we've got no project managers. Just like the Melburn project down here, has nothing to do with trash. But $35 million, and how far are they over? How far are they over budget? Railroad putting the screws to us? We're talking down there about moving that little terminal cartway, signed now, since the railroad said if we can't put it back where it was, the architect wants an extra $50,000 to move it. Is it going to be done? Probably not. Probably not. Pardon? Well, the mayor said he's going to be done, so, speaking for you again, mayor.
Fantastic.
So, yes, sir.
I hope.
Yes, yeah, Pat.
Just a couple of questions, just for my curiosity.
Yeah.
How many days a week does Republic run to pick up all, to do one side? Is it daily, or is it just twice a week?
I don't know.
Five days. Yes, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, okay. And how long is the contract for?
Six years until 2026.
2026. And again, this may be silly, but my wheels are just kind of turning here, it's like, I was saying to the commissioner, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, and you're looking, they're taking this three plow trucks. You know, no problem on this, but I would say between chassis and a bed and plow, for a whole plow, it thinks less than $300,000.
Yep.
So I realize you don't have the capital to do it right now, maybe you do, I would know that. If it's possible, look at maybe us doing it ourselves. You know, buying a couple of trash trucks, hire four or five, six employees, running full time. I bet you probably pay half, but you, you pay...
Property, but the mayor doesn't want them to take it.
So we, we visited Frankfurt, okay? And Frankfurt's similar in our size. And they do their own trash service. And the mayor said, "I wish we didn't. I wish we did what you did, because it would save us money, because we're actually charging." The way we charge, even, even if we charged 10 bucks still, it would, it, they would still make out in Frankfurt with $10, with what they're paying now. So running your own service, it, it just, we've done the research, we've crushed the numbers with Frankfurt, it just doesn't work here.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't easy.
Well, the 50s and 60s, the city did pick up their own trash.
There's a lot of maintenance costs, yeah, overhead, yeah.
Oh, if you're enabled that, it's really service. Oh, if you're enabled that, it's really service.
Mm-hmm. So everybody, everybody...
Looks like you're getting old, the way you're walking there.
Yeah, that ass one, twenty west Ottawa, that's important. I'm not in favor of any bill raising, but I understand the numbers, I get it, I'm on board, so I, I, I understand. Dave, you said this would cover us for a minimum of five years, can we put that in the ordinance? So that when we get a change of people, somebody doesn't say, ah, let's just up it. Before the five years. Actually, and I, I don't know, can you put that up on the here that, Wayne?
The exhibit part, if I can pull out your ordinance out here.
Oh, there you go, scroll back down to the exhibit here. If you look at it, Jeff, this is 2021's, basically, revenue, expense, down there, what the carryover is, and based on the numbers, we're projecting it at, at the same amount of pickups a year. As you see at the end of 2025, we're still running just a little bit ahead, so we have a little money if things would happen to go, the numbers would change in the wrong direction for some reason. So I just, you know, that's the appendix that will fix the ordinance. And if you, well, seven council members, if that changes, I'd hate to see the new ones coming in and say, hey, let's just up the fee.
Yeah.
Let's just up the trash fees, we can do whatever, you know, without extra money somewhere, if we can just get it in the ordinance. Well, the money that goes, I will say this, Jeff, all the money that's collected, if you see on there, goes directly into the trash fund. It can only be spent for trash. Now, I can't tell you what another council might do, but...
That, that's my concern.
Because they can, they can underwrite any ordinance that's written, but I can just say that we set it up this silly with the hope that we wouldn't have to readdress it and that people wouldn't have to deal with another change within five years.
Okay.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? How much of the ten dollars does Bill Shugget in order to bill us and take the payment?
They don't get a, they don't get a penny. When we, when we set the original contract, or the original fee up in 2019, the first year, we paid them a dollar a customer per month. And after the first year, they agreed to waive that fee. The utilities actually pay the city what they call pilot money, which is basically, they aren't taxed because they're a public entity, so by formula set up by the state, they, they do pay or assist us in projects where they don't charge the city to do them. And this is one of the things that they've done, is, is waive the fee to bill the customers. So there's, there's no money in this bill that goes towards the actual billing.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, you have to vote for what you're proposing. Were this not, have you thought about a dollar a year for five years? Instead of a fifteen, ten increase, have a tenth, ten increase a year for five years? I mean, a tenth, ten increase, that's a lot, we're not fifty percent increase.
Well, like I said, this is what I put together, and I'm pretty...
That you're a voter?
That, that's what I put together, yes, and, and the reason being is that it's like If, if you change, you know, it's just easier to do it one time and be done with it, quite honestly. And I don't, I don't say that as a luxury, I say that as, as it just makes it easier for everyone. You get used to what you pay.
Makes it easier for, in here.
Well, okay, I guess here's the way I look at it.
Doesn't make it easier for these people out there that don't have the money. I know you guys think by all, we're not, it's not, it is a lot of people out there. We just think about it, there's a lot of people out there that don't have part of the money.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to see how to begin and agree with the guys to do it, but I don't, I cannot get over a fifty percent increase.
Well, and I would just say this, and I'm going to defend it, and then I'd let the rest of these guys speak, because I put this out there, Jeff, start somewhere, we've been, we've been at this for six months, and here's what's happening right now, we lose forty thousand dollars a month, basically. We have to figure out where that money, money's going to come from, and it's not appropriate for this year. We can continue to do that and continue to discuss it, but it was time to put something out there for people to, to talk about, and this is it. I mean, I'll leave, I'll leave it at that for the rest of them to talk.
Well, I think that it's underappreciated how much we have helped with the trash fees over the last six years. Dave was the one that was really, did not want us to raise the fees four years ago when it needed to be done, and we are still paying a lot of city dollars for the trash, so. And if you look at the county, what they pay for trash, I have a friend that lives in the county, she pays thirty-something a month, so.
I moved in, I moved into the city a year ago from the county, and I had to pay twenty dollars a month. It, it didn't make any difference on how much trash I set out, it took it. Now, I'm sure a lot of people drive because they have a couch or something they want to set out, or they have twenty, twenty-five, thirty bucks or something like that, if you're there.
No, that's incorrect. Part of the fee involved is this...
I know, I've never done that.
Part of it is they will...
That's why I'm going with this, it's this, it's a guide.
They will collect that, there are certain days, and then, I don't know, is it on our website?
Yeah.
Large items when they're picked up?
Once a month, you can set large items out, and you don't have to put stickers on them anymore. They had proposed twenty-five dollars for a mattress, or a couch, or things like that, and we thought it would be simpler just to pay a flat fee to them for that service. And...
But they won't pick up other things they had to pay, I don't, I don't know this.
No, it just...
They only pick up the large items once a month.
At your location, someplace, because they said they had to pay the money to the republic before they did.
That's not accurate. And any other cities around, you're not going to find a lower tush fee, so it is what it is.
Do you only have to use stickers anymore?
No, you have, uh...
No, you don't.
Well, there's, there's one time a month, where you can put, um, I got to get the thing out, you're leaving. Do you know back there, Jacob, exactly?
I don't know the exact days, but it's, it's based on your day you pick up, so like Friday, pick up the first Friday of the month, you can get it, and then if you have more than two items that you want to get rid of on that day, or you need to get rid of something on another day, you can call the public directly, you can contract for, I think it is twenty-five dollars at that point. The stickers, we only use the stickers on the free bulk pickup day, and if you have a site, I can get you...
They're like two bags of stuff, is that correct?
So the two, they have two dollar tickets now for extra trash, I have the extra bag trash that went through the trash can, they have two dollar stickers now, they don't have the one dollar stickers.
But I can't imagine who would have more trash than would go in that.
They do.
People that don't recycle, throw everything away. Yard waste goes in there too, people that don't know, I put yard waste in the dumpsters, those in, fills them up.
Has anybody looked at security of the code money or the code for property money?
Yeah.
To kind of raise those then, or?
Isn't it like three million dollars or something, are you in trouble? I've heard that you might be getting something like three million dollars, and you'd like to act as a threat.
Yeah, we're still, we're still getting guidance from federal government, you know how that takes time, but, yeah, we're still getting guidance on what we can actually spend that with, and we only have until 2024 to spend that money, so we're still gathering the information on that, or waiting on the government to tell us. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
I'd like to say if you ever have issues with the republic not picking up your trash, or if you feel like they're not doing a good job, reach out to the mayor's office or someone who can contact the republic directly, and they can try to remedy the situation for you. And I, I don't want to raise anyone's fees, but I mean, sometimes you have to do it, you know, you just have to do the hard things in life and...
And what happens if you don't give, for example, he doesn't pay the extra five dollars a month, what happens to that?
Probably have a late fee on your utility bill, that's on the utility bill, it's part of your bill.
Last call. All right, we'll close the panel hearing at seven ten PM. It's now seven eleven PM. Calling to order the special session for Logan'sport County Council for Monday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, I'm Mayor Chris Martin, we'll start with the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full call. Amy Dennismore?
Present.
Very good.
Present.
Anything else? Action. Jacob Gollum?
Present.
Scott Peet?
Present.
Mr. Speaker? Action. Carl McPherson?
President.
Start with the approval minutes for the April fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Call for questions. Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Jacob Gollum?
Yes.
Scott Peet?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Any reports from committees, boards, and commissions?
Yeah, Mayor, finance committee, Mayor on four nineteen twenty-one in Logan'sport, M U Philly next door, we discussed, uh, City of Logan'sport buying a new squad vehicle and purchased a drone, it's been moved on through our May third meeting. Also, we talked Aaron Schaper with additional costs to the contract at Lexington Village and the Geotech work, out of the High Street, moving up from twenty lots to fifty-two lots, talking about funding the MSRB, talked about changing the property cleanups, talked about sidewalk grant fee fund for 2026, out around the new school, the Logan'sport School District is building, and talked about the LMU grant money that has to be a pass-through through the City of Logan'sport for demolishing the power plant. Also, we discussed, and put together a committee, Jake is going to lead it, refurbishing or demolishing Memorial Home, since Cass County Commissioners and Cass County Council want nothing to do with it, the expense will be a hundred percent on the City of Logan'sport. That's it, Mayor.
Any other reports from committees, boards, and commissions? Public comments? Anyone who would like to make a comment, please come to the mics, teach your name and Seeing none, we'll start a little business. Councilman Hood, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six is an ordinance of the common council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, for additional appropriations for the continuation of the fifty-fifty sidewalk program. Mayor Burton, I ask for a second vote on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six.
My second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Jacob Gollum?
Yes.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Scott Peet?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six passes on its second reading. New business, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty. Councilman Gollum?
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one twenty, a resolution of the common council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, committing funds for expenditures not obtained from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for the awarded Main Street Revitalization Did you want to say something?
I didn't know, I just wanted to explain it first.
Yeah, yeah.
Just real quick, so that we were awarded a grant for them, MSRB program for six hundred thousand dollars. Because of the timeframe of the contract and how OPRAs' timing hits for such a project, we will have to have extensions. Because extensions are approved in their timeframe, we don't know how much of that six hundred thousand will be paid out until those extensions are given, and so this is just kind of a safeguard to make sure that the project doesn't stop, stop in the middle of the project if there's a hiccup through the OPRAs' funding source, so that's basically what it is. And then if there's any additional questions. I know there was some, some questions at subcommittee, and possibly wanting to talk to the administrator, or even maybe OPRAs, so if you'd want to table it, that, and I can set that up, or you can vote on it tonight.
I would make a motion to table this, Eric, and I think it would help a lot of us if Stephen Ray would come, and maybe bring some examples of this situation from other cities, and think so, we can better understand it.
Great, my second.
Any further discussion on decision twenty twenty-one dash one twenty?
Is this for tabling it?
Yes, okay, thank you. Call for question. Scott Peet?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Jacob Gollum?
Yes.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty is tabled. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one, Councilman Peet?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one, a resolution of the common council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, authorized to submit a vol. light clearance grant application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to addressing related matters. Mr. Mayor, I ask for a vote on resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one, please.
My second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Jacob Gollum?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Scott Peet?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one passes. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-two, Councilman McPherson.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-two, slumming right spot for the resolution of the common council of the City of Logan'sport.
You have a motion?
A motion, we move this forward.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, just, wait, go ahead. I'm just going to say for those in attendance, the pack for the last resolution, the resolution we're voting on now, and I believe, so one other one there, Mike.
One twenty-one, one twenty-two, and one twenty-three?
Okay, and one twenty-three, those three resolutions all are dealing with, the City of Logan'sport is jointly applying for a grant to do remediation on the LMU facility, clean up all the asbestos and contaminants, and I believe take down the smokestack, the elevator that goes across from the small building on the north side, and... elevator that goes across from the smoke building on the north side, and because we have the same tax ID, these have to go through the city as well as through LMU.
This is costing the city nothing, this is money coming, but federal and state government has to come through the city.
Any further discussion? Call for question.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Larry Hood?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Jacob Noll?
Yes.
Scott Peet?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-two passes. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-three, Councilor Densborn?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-three, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, for the allocation of funds received through the American Rescue Plan, H B one three one nine. I'd like to move resolution twenty twenty-one dash one two three forward for a vote.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The American Rescue Plan, House Bill thirteen nineteen, what does that contain? That's the, that's the plan that is just going to prove that we're supposed to get like three point six million for, that's the stimulus package that's going to come through. That's for funding? That's for funding, and this is just to say that we will place a plan in action. We have, before we can spend any of that money, there must be a plan submitted by the city for how these expenses will be entailed for the next two and a half, or three and a half years, and so this is just a resolution saying we will put that plan in place. They need this for the, for the grant, for the black grant, to say that we are spending that money, for, we have not got total block enclosures in place, but we do know that it will be allocated and spent in that three and a half years.
Okay, thank you. Now, are we going to have to set up a separate fund also on this, Jane?
Yeah, we will. Now, are you, well, David, are you talking about, are you talking about the Rescue Plan or for the grant, the black grant?
Yeah, the Rescue Plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and it will be allocated from a separate fund.
Any further discussion? Call for question.
Scott Peet?
Yes.
Jacob Noll?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Larry Hood?
Yes.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-three passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve, Councilman Morris?
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve, an amendment to ordinance twenty-eighteen twenty-eight of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, approving the charges for residential trash and recycling collection in the City of Logan'sport, Indiana. Move this forward for a vote.
Second. Any further discussion?
I have heard from my constituents on the trash fee, and they're not for that, I support people who are poor and cannot afford that five dollars, and I'm going to vote no on that, and I'd either request to have that table, to do more inspection on that. That's it, thank you.
This is the first reading. Our call for question on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve?
Wait, are we calling for a...
I'm questioning for tabling it or for moving it forward?
Moving it forward, voting on it, first reading.
Did we get a second to move it forward?
You seconded the table, did you not?
I seconded the table and not move it forward.
You did second the moving forward?
I seconded, I seconded what Scott Peet just said.
And a discussion, yeah.
Yes, so it's moving forward for a vote?
Has there been a second to move it forward, everybody?
Jake seconded.
Take this, okay, apologize.
Okay, this is for the movement of the event, or of the ordinance. Larry Hood?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
No.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Jacob Noll?
Yes.
Scott Peet?
No.
That's four to three.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve passes on its first reading. Public comments?
I've got public comments on this.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to proceed, made a motion to table it, no second, or seconded to take a vote.
I actually, Jake actually...
He seconded.
So, before I made my comment, yeah, Dave motioned, Jake seconded, then I opened it up for discussion between council, and that's when Councilman Peet had asked.
I brought up my motion here.
You don't want to table it, sorry.
It's only the first reading, so we still have to go through another reading, as far as that concerns, technically it's not passed.
Yes.
Second. Halfway there.
Second reading would be, second reading would be May third.
All right, any other public comments? Seeing none, council member comments?
Yeah, I have just one, and like I said before, I put this plan together, I think it's a fair plan for our community, I realize not everyone agrees with that, but I certainly entertain any, any proposal that Scott would bring to the table that could remedy this in some fashion, so, you know, I'm open to anything, and this was only the first reading, it's not, it's not a done deal, and I thank the people that did come today for coming.
I, we're working on a statement, and we'll miss the next council meeting on the number of May third, I would ask that you, could you come up with some better ideas for the trash tax, or table that until I can get back to vote on that, if you would?
So, what you're asking is table it until June meeting?
Yes.
We're going to put that in a motion, or were you just asking?
I could put that in a motion.
I think we should just do it at the main meeting, I don't think we can do it now.
Yeah, you got to table it at the main meeting.
Because Peet is not going to be here to make it.
I won't make that motion, so if someone would be so inclined, I'd appreciate that.
Any other council member comments?
We've been working on this quite a while. Didn't just happen today.
I want to thank every one of you for coming to speak to us today, sharing your thoughts on this issue. Any other council member comments? All right. Miscellaneous business and many matters don't really consider, including APA, section five oh four, compliance or concerns. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll get motion adjourned.
Second. Any further discussion? Call for question.
Scott Peet?
Yes.
Larry Hood?
Yes.
Jacob Noll?
Yes.
Dave Morris?
Yes.
Carl McPherson?
Yes.
Amy Dennismore?
Yes.
Seven twenty-eight P M, we are adjourned, thank you.